All right.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, March 8, 2022. The time right now is 7:02 PM. And swipe off, we'll do the follow-up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council members present and establishing that forum are councilmembers Ultra, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Fisher, will you please leave us a pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to their beloved for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds, justice for all.
All right, next thing we have on the agenda is public hearing. So this is opposed right away vacation, and Mr. Gatlin will be giving the presentation on this. So we'll go ahead and bring Mr. Gatlin forward for the presentation.
If you could, if you could, and learn for Kyle Fisher, that'd be appreciated. I think he's got a lot going on.
Jody, could you move it to the second?
Mr. Gatlin, you are now on the panel, so we are now prepared for your presentation.
Great. Jody, if you could move it to the next slide, please. Mayor and councilmembers, tonight we're here to have a public hearing regarding the vacation of a portion of 171st Avenue. In the map before you right now, that is the part that is in the hot pink. The portions adjacent to the port that's going to be vacated in blue is owned by LGM Enterprises. The portions that is adjacent to 171st that is in green is owned by a private party, Mark Mills or his estate and Sally Boyce. And there is another property that's also in green that uses portions of 171st for access to West Main Street. What the applicant is or what we're doing tonight is considering this, this action, there is a recommended motion, and what the motion will do is give the applicant one year to work out certain easement and right-of-way agreements with the parties, both with the city, with the Homish PUD, because they have a public power line within the easement and with the parties that are directly impacted by this vacation. And if everything and the agreement will have to be approved by, reviewed and approved by our city attorney. If that all takes place, we will bring back to you an ordinance, and that ordinance will actually vacate the right-of-way. There is a fairly detailed recommended motion, and that motion includes recommendations that the petitioner pay for the appraisal of the right-of-way, pay for all the survey work that's needed to come up with the legal descriptions for the right-of-way vacation. Talks about developing agreements that'll have to be reviewed and approved by the city attorney. And as I just mentioned, if all that gets done, it's and recorded and brought back to you, and ordinance will actually vacate that property. That really is all I have to say. This has been before the council several times before, and I am open for any questions you might have if I didn't explain it clear enough.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gatlin. And just to be clear, you were requesting that we move to open up the public hearing. I opened up the public hearing, received comments. Following that, the council will close the public hearing, and then the council will move to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing before considering the requested action of the agenda bill.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. And Ms. Wyckoff will bring up the requested actions when, after we've gone through public comment. So thank you. All right.
Councilmembers, before I open this up for public comment, do any of you, does any of you, any one of you have a, any questions for clarification for Mr. Gatlin? Go ahead, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Davis.
Lost my mind. Sorry. So just a quick go over on this. This would allow LMJ period of one year to work out the access to the, the green block in the center there, the, the blue blocks. And at which time, if they do work that out, then it comes back to us for approval. Is that, is that the, the shortlist there?
Yes, that is the shortlist.
Okay. Just making sure. Thank you very much.
David, are there any other questions for Mr. Gatlin before we open up for public hearing? All right, so you know, we'll go ahead and open this up for public testimony for this public hearing. We're just giving testimony on this this evening. Please go ahead and raise your hand. If you're in the Zoom app, that will be a little hand icon of the middle bottom of your screen most likely. And then if you're on the phone, you can hit start now. We do have one person who has passed their hand up so far. We'll go ahead and the way this will work is I will call your name, the way that it shows in the attendees list. You will be brought forward into the panel list where you will have the opportunity to remove, to make it so that we can hear you, and also turn your video on. You will then have three minutes to speak, which will start after you state your name and area of residence. All right, so we're going to go ahead and bring our first speaker in. Sally Boyce, you are now on the panel. Please go ahead and take yourself off mute. Feel free to turn on your video. Please state your name and area of residence for the record, and then we'll start with three minutes time.
Hi, my name is Sally Boyce, and can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know how to turn on my video right now. Apologize. I'm the owner of the property 16211 on 171st Avenue, along with the estate of Mark Mills at this time, and I do have some concerns I'd like to voice. First one possibly being the accessibility for like an aid car or a fire truck on a 20-foot easement that has only one way in and one way out. I'm not sure if the cul-de-sac at the end of the road is going to be maintained or whether the actual easement stops at my driveway, so therefore there wouldn't be a turnaround. That brings up another concern that people might use my driveway as a turnaround. There are cars that are sometimes parked along the road and possibly RVs moving at certain times or even parked on the road. Whether that would cause it to be blocked and could possibly be, you know, a safety concern for me or whoever is in this property. I also have another concern on what the impact would be for any future use of this property. As I understand it, the zoning, I haven't had a chance to look it up. I apologize. This was all kind of short notice for me getting this prepared. And as I understand it, the zoning is commercial residential. So there's a possibility this land could be used for commercial purposes, and I'm not sure if a 20-foot easement would allow that to happen. Therefore, it might impact my future investment in this property. So at this time, that's all I really have to say, and I'm asking for more time for your consideration that I can research this and see how it is going to impact this property. And that's all I have to say.
Right, thank you very much, Sally Boyce. If you, if there's anybody else who is interested in speaking tonight, please go ahead and raise your hand. We now have Michael Langston has raised their hand. We'll bring Michael Langston into the panel and move Sally Boyce back to the attendees list. Michael Langston, you are now in the panel. Please go ahead and state your name and area of residence for the record. Good evening.
Hi, this is Mike Langston with Frey Architecture. I actually live in Woodinville, but I am the architect that is representing LMJ. You know, we just wanted to, first of all, say thank you to Tom, the city staff, the city council, and, and Hugh Mayor Thomas for taking this proposal into consideration. We, we do hear Sally's comments there, and we, we understand those. We believe we can overcome those concerns as we investigate this through the process more. The idea is that we create a cohesive campus for LMJ in the future, but not to block any utility or access for any current residents of the, the area. So really, that's all I wanted to state at this time, but just wanted to say thank you for taking this proposal into consideration. I know this proposal was brought up right before COVID, and the city had to take a different direction for the health and safety of the community. So we're, we're happy to share this again, and hopefully the, the council members take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's anybody else that'd like to speak on this matter, please raise your hand now. Again, go ahead and hit the little hand icon in the Zoom app or hit star nine if you're on the phone. This is the last call for any other comments. All right, seeing none, I turn to the council. We'll go ahead and put the requested actions up on the screen. The first consider item of consideration, I think, would be for council to consider closing the public hearing. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead. Councilmember Scarborough, you're muted.
He moved to close the public.
I owe you a buck. Move to close the public portion of the public hearing.
Second, Davis.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Scarborough, second from Councilmember Davis. As I understood the motion, it's recommended action item number one, as shown on the screen, which is move to close the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Okay, we will go ahead and, is any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we move vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Abstentions. Motion passed at 7:00. Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I move to close the public hearing.
May I second?
I have a motion to close the public hearing from Councilmember Scarborough, a second from Councilmember Kenny. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Abstentions. Motion passed at 7:00. Thank you. I turn to council. Are there any questions with staff or a motion? Okay, I don't see any hands up. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
I would just, I guess, reiterate what Councilmember Davis said, is that essentially, you know, by making them, if we were to adopt or move to grant the street vacation, that there would be a year and that, that LMJ would be working with the property owner that just spoke, so that we can make sure that those issues were and concerns are addressed and all the utility stuff, and then it would come back for us to approve, correct?
Yes, Gatlin, can you confirm? I, I understand the answer is correct, but if you could go ahead and make that statement or correct me?
It's correct. Okay. Then I, you know, for me personally, I think a year's time is, you know, that extra time that kind of the property owner is looking for, it does have to come back so that they can work through that. So I'm prepared to move to grant the street vacation petition and direct city staff to prepare proposed ordinance vacating the right-of-way, retaining easement rights for public utilities provided that the ordinance shall not be considered for adoption unless and until access and utility easements inclusive of release and waiver in a form approved by the city attorney for the adjacent property owner not owned by the petitioner have been recorded.
Scarborough, second. A motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember David for recommended action number three, as shown on this slide. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed. Abstentions. Thank you very much, everybody. We're now going to move on to the next item on the agenda. That's public comments on item number five. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except in a quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking to the council this evening, please go ahead and raise your hand. Again, that's it, and raise hand function in the Zoom stream. We're heading star nine on your phone. If you're interested, please do that now. Last, last call for public comments. All right, seeing none. We do have a need for an executive session. The executive session is potential litigation, first under RTW 42.30.110, subsection 1, subsection 11. And property acquisition, first under RTW 42.30.110, subsection 1, subsection 11. We will be going into executive session, which is a separate Zoom meeting. This current Zoom meeting will stay active. During that time, our city clerk will give updates on potential abstentions to a time which I will inform you of momentarily. When we are finished with that, we will then move back into this current meeting, and there will be action to follow as we do still have much more left on the agenda this evening. So we are now going into executive session for an initial ten minutes. The time right now is 9:00, I'm sorry, 7:19 PM. Thank you.
Fire is everywhere. My last extension will be 7:44, I think. Okay, the camera's working. There was a message from Deborah and Jody. Deborah, sorry. Campbell, Hanford, for Knight, no, not Knight, Davis, Kenny. We got everybody, yep. You just let me know when you're ready.
Just checking the microphones, and, and everybody, are we okay? All right, great. Thank you very much. Our staff is doing a great job here this evening with operating a new way here for hybrid. And Jody Wyckoff, I think for all of what you're doing, and everybody else that's been part of this, so. And with Wyckoff, David, thank you for all of what you're doing and everybody else that's been part of us, so. You're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda and that is number seven. Final action seven point one. Ordinance number zero zero eight twenty twenty-two repealing MMC twenty twenty. Sorry. Repealing MMC. Twenty point six two large wireless communication facilities replacing with MMC. Twenty-two point six two wireless communication facilities amending MMC. Twenty-two point one two definitions and amendments zero zero nine twenty twenty-two. Adopting MMC five point five four utilities and telecommunications franchise is great. There were a lot of twenty-two's and twenty-seven's, so thank you for that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you recall at the last meeting on February twenty-second, Emily Minor with Aug. Cathy Wallace gave a lengthy presentation of the proposed changes. And with repealing portions of the code and replacing it and then also making some changes to our definitions and adding a franchise agreement section of the code. So these changes are necessary to comply with the FPC regulations while complying with the design requirements. As Emily mentioned, Planning Commission held several meetings over the past two years to discuss the amendments. And then city staff spoke with the industries affected by the changes, including AT&amp;T, Verizon, Snohomish County PUD. You heard those who were most mostly impacted by those changes speak and give a positive public testimony and voice support for the amendments and meet common ground. With that.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or a motion? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance number zero zero eight slash twenty twenty-two repealing MMC twenty-two point six two large wireless communication facilities and replacing with MMC twenty-two point six two wireless communication facilities. Amending MMC two-two point one two definitions providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Handford, seconds.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny and second from Councilmember Hanford for recommended action number one. Under final action seven point one is shown on the screen. Any discussions on the motion? Saying none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. There's a second motion for your consideration, Council. Councilmember Holter, go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance number zero zero nine slash twenty twenty-two adopting MMC five point five four utilities and telecommunication franchises providing providing for severability and establishing effective date.
Second, Scarborough.
Second from Councilmember Scarborough for recommended action number two on final action seven point one is shown on the screen and discussion on the motion. Saying none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Bray. Ready to move on to the next item on the agenda. Item seven point two for final reading. Proposed amendments chapter four point five oh MMC park board. We bring Mr. Swanson. Good evening, Mr. Swanson. Go ahead.
Mayor, Council. So tonight, staff is presenting amendments to chapter four point five zero of the park board code. And the purpose of these amendments is to remove the requirements for district representative from the code and replace those with two at-large members. And the purpose behind this was to allow greater opportunity for residents to serve on a border commission. At the first meeting, one one area of discussion was the communication, how will the the district, the planning commission, and then it expanded out to just other individuals with with interest in the park and recreation facility. How will that communication exist now where now that the school district or the planning commission will not have a representative? And so from that, what staff is proposing is additional language in the proposed ordinance. This will go under Section B. As displayed in the in the packet and it's all read it out loud at board meetings, city staff shall apply relevant updates to the boards from as applicable, the city of Monroe School Districts, fairgrounds, other city boards and commissions and other organizations with interest in recreation services and facilities in and around the city of Monroe. And so this original language was proposed and the two comments that I received back, one from the city attorney and one from Councilmember Kenny was from Councilmember Kenny was to or to include, as we discussed in the meeting, all the commissions add something about cities boards and commissions, which we did. And then the second one was from the city attorney, the and or regarding as applicable. And so those are the the two changes that are different from the last time that this was. In addition to that, I believe it was Councilmember Campbell and maybe a few others had questions on why we originally owed the inclusion of and so I went back and I looked through the sources and there was nothing clearing that explained why. So talking with staff that's been at the city for a while and just looking at kind of historic events that had taken place during that time. Three possibilities occur. The first one is 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 Director Farrell is the first parks director for the city of Monroe. Prior to that, the city did not have a parks department. It was a division of the public works. And so I'm imagining at the at the Parks Board meetings the city having a dedicated parks department. There was initial communication needs between the city, which brings me to my second point, is there weren't a lot of fields back then. And so there was a lot of sharing and communication between the school district and the city of Monroe about different organizations using their fields for sporting events. And the last one is the build out of the Freylons. And so the Freylons development, which loosely includes all the residential development, the industrial development and the Freylons Elementary School was probably the largest development the city had seen at that time. And there was a lot of moving parts, including a new school that was that was opened. A lot of city-owned open space adjacent to that school. So I would imagine that there was a lot of communication going back and forth between the city and the district at that time. Again, these are the theories of me just discussing and going back in history. I don't have an absolute, this is the reason why the city included a a school district representative. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Swanson. Are there questions from Mr. Swanson or a motion? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance number zero zero seven slash twenty twenty-two amending chapter four point five zero MMC park board. Updating and clarifying the composition, membership criteria, terms of office and powers and duties of the city's park board. Providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Handford, second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny and a second from Councilmember Hanford regarding the ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell, go ahead.
So did I miss? Because the, did we put in there the we're still going to touch base with the school? I mean, I get the the history, but essentially what that tells me, Ben, is that I mean, it's no different than today. I mean, we're still interacting with schools and I mean, a lot of that stuff is just lives on in different areas of of town now. But we're, we incorporate that somewhere in here, correct?
Correct. The newly proposed language from the from the last council meeting we had on the twenty-second incorporates an update by city staff on the school district, the fairgrounds at at every parks board meeting, so essentially. And and so and I know Director Farrell has good relationships with the with the school district and talks to them on a regular basis. So that should be fairly easy to get from the district for our for our updates to the park board. And then included in that, thank you for inviting me. It's helpful that that the departments do their department reports at the last park board meeting. I just shared the community development monthly report with them and went over that. And so it allows that kind of information to get from the planning commission. In addition to just the communication that we have with other departments that we share with them.
Okay, thank you.
Your will.
If you mean either just type one of the motion. Saying none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show, I believe the Councilmember Fisher is not in on this vote. I am, we're understanding he's having technical issues right now, so the motion passes six zero. All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the and go ahead, Ms. May.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that Councilmember Fisher was in the attendees and I just promoted him.
Okay, thank you very much. So let the record show that Councilmember Fisher was not here for the vote, but he is here in the panel at this time. Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's consent agenda. I turn to council. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I get Davis.
Yeah, a motion from Councilmember Hanford and a second from Councilmember Davis to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Ready to move on now to unfinished business. This is item nine point one. Item nine point one is first reading amendments chapter three point five two MMC parking impact fees with Mr. Swanson. Mr. Swanson, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Mayor, Council. So you're seeing this again because I aired on the ordinance in two different locations regarding the park impact fee. And so with that. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And so as described in the agenda bill, the first error that that I put in the ordinance was I put two to four units attached. We already have duplexes in there, so duplexes are two units. And so it was essentially, it would be confusing between the two categories on what impact fee to charge. Granted, under this impact fee ordinance, they're the same fee, so it's it's really not a huge deal at this point, however, it is wrong. The second one is I had greater than five units in there. It should have been five or more units. If somebody in the off chance came in and submitted an application for five attached units, an impact fee wouldn't be charged charged to them because the five, the greater than five units excluded five and therefore wasn't identified in the impact fee. So with that, we're actually in a pretty good spot. We passed the original ordinance in a timely manner with the the pros plan and we're in a essentially ninety-day delay from imposing these impact fees. So they actually haven't taken effect yet. But again, I I did I did err in the ordinance and requires council to go back and look at it again. And if council's okay with these proposed changes, I I would propose to put it on the consent agenda for the next round.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Swanson or a motion? Councilmember Hanford, please go ahead.
Move to accept first reading of ordinance number zero one zero twenty twenty-two. Commanding chapter three point five two MMC park impact fees. Updating the city's schedule of park impact fees and calculation methodology there for providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Scarborough, second.
Second from Councilmember Hanford, second from Councilmember Holter. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we're going to check the attendees list again. Councilmember Fisher's having issues with his connection this evening. He's not in the attendees list at this time. So we do have a motion on the floor for the requested action in nine point one is shown on the screen. Any discussion again? Saying none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes pick zero. We'll have the record that that Councilmember Fisher was not in at the time of the vote. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's new business item number ten. Ten point one, accept conveyance of Catman property to the city. Mr. Swanson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So under the ordinance in the packet about twenty years ago and I have to sorry, I need to find my spot. All right, so under ordinance number twelve seventy-two, the city essentially struck an agreement with Catman, who currently owns two large parcels down by the Skikomish River. Essentially, when Catman ended their mining operations, that property would be donated to the city. And so Catman did did finish up with their mining operations. Went through their reclamation process with Department of Natural Resources and in turn approached the city and and sent a letter initiating the conveyance of that property to the city. And so with that, the city has a hundred and twenty days to respond according to the the requirements outlined in the ordinance twelve seventy-two, a hundred and twenty days to respond to that. That would essentially be the transfer of a hundred and twenty acres to the city of Monroe. Catman would retain a thirty-seven acre area identified in the ordinance as the operations pad. That's currently where their batch plant operates, so operations would continue on that thirty-seven acre portion. However, the hundred and forty would be donated to the city of Monroe. And so tonight, staff is requesting that city council authorize staff to send notice of the city's decision to accept the Catman offer and to convey the property to the city. And with that, I will answer any questions if anyone has any.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Swanson. Any questions for Mr. Swanson? Go ahead, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Davis, you're on, dear.
All right, I I don't have any question, but I would move to authorize staff to send notification of the city's decision to accept Catman's offer to convey to the city on the terms and conditions as outlined in the master plan for the Catman Skikomish River gravel pit. The property described and depicted in attachment one. Exhibit A of the council packet agenda bill.
Handford, second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Davis, a second from Councilmember Hanford for requested action number one is shown on the screen under ten point one new business. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, we'll move to vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Motion passes pick zero. Again, I know Councilmember Fisher was here during the presentation. Unfortunately, I think he's lost the connection again. So voting back to six zero. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. This is council reports. I'll just go ahead and go through the numbers. Councilmember Campbell, go ahead. Any report this evening?
Work.
Did he say no report?
I think so.
Okay, I'll take that as a yes. All right, Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Just looking forward to things opening back up. I saw the different things going on in the music in the park this summer and and also looking forward to meeting again as a council back in council chambers for the first time in a couple of years. And so that's I'm really looking forward to that. So thank you.
Andrew, Councilmember Holter.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Holter. Councilmember Davis.
I had a question about next week's meeting. Is that going to be a hybrid meeting or is that going to be in council chambers only?
Ms. May will fill us in on next week's meeting. The short end is that I anticipate that she'll be telling us that next week's regular council meeting will be canceled. However, the committee meeting will be held. The committee meeting will be held as a hybrid meeting. So we are we are effective next week going to be holding our council meetings as separate meetings. But unfortunately, we are likely to cancel next week's meeting.
Okay, thank you. That that answers my question as I wasn't going to be in Monroe next week. So if it's hybrid, then I will definitely be at any meetings that we might be holding, so. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Kenny.
I just wanted to echo Councilmember Hanford's excitement about getting back together again as a as a council. That's something I have not experienced yet. All being together for a council meeting, and I'm really looking forward to that whenever that occurs. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Scarborough.
Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. We're now going to move into staff and department reports. We're going to start the parks department report with Mr. Farrell. Thank you, council member Scarborough. We're now gonna move into staff and department reports. We're gonna start off the park department report with Mr. Farrell. Good evening, Mr. Farrell.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you. So, attached attachment in the the tonight's meeting is our monthly report from last month, February, and just a couple of things just wanna skim through here is, you know, there's a lot of nice photos, some before and after of what work our crew's been working on in the parks, and I love those because it really shows kind of conditions prior and then and then after with the improvements that they've been doing. A lot of landscapes in the parks and some tree work and also moving some benches over at Lake Ty Park that were, you know, becoming eroded along the shore and also been a subject to some vandalism as well. So, that's going really well. Do have some some more recent news, and that's an update to the about the pros plan, is that the state recreation and conservation office approved our recently adopted pros plan. So this means that we have retained our eligibility for RCO grant programs for the next six years, so that's great news. And I just wanna thank Mayor Thomas, all the council members, and all of our residents for all the fine input and work that we got a nice product, and I really look forward to implementing our new pros plan. There's there's information about the park board's February meeting as far as their discussion items that went on there, as well as there's a copy of their minutes from the January meeting. And then also an update on the fact that we had the second of the design workshops for the North Hill area park. And next steps for that will be utilizing what we've learned from from the community, especially the residents that surround that park. A that'll help us for our RCO grant application for for develop, design and development of that park. I see that there's a hand raised.
Thank you, council member. Mr. Farrell, we'll continue your report momentarily. Council member Hanford, please go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I was just thinking, did we ever follow up Mr. Farrell with on the hours on Lake Ty? After we?
Thank you. Yeah, and actually I had that as outside the report, just an update on on that item is that first off is that, yes, we we have lit the 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 fields for both scheduled and unscheduled uses. The 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 drop dead ending is ten PM. We just want to be in consideration and also meeting our code. So, so anyways, yeah, we we have extended that, and I'm looking forward to this weekend. I think we 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 gain more sunlight. So we reduce lighting, and these are very efficient LED lights, so that that's that's a that's a great thing too. But yes, we are allowing the access to the public as 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 we we all had had desired and the community desired importantly. But I wanna do, on that note, also point out that this week, staff are meeting with representatives from various sports groups, because those are multipurpose fields. And we're gonna go over with them in a little kind of seminar how to move portable mounds in a safe manner and goals and things like that, because, you know, there are different sports that that operate there, and we don't have staff twenty four seven, and we want as much opportunity as possible for various sports to utilize those fields. So, this is where the various user groups can help each other out, and it's and and what we gain by that is is that more of the various sports, multipurpose, that sort of thing can occur then, instead of just saying like, okay, we can only do baseball for the next three months. I mean, it's great for the baseball fans and players, but but anyway, so that's what we're doing, and it's really exciting having these multipurpose fields. So, thank you. I hope I answered your question. Oh, thanks. So then back to the report, just a couple of things I wanna point out is is I believe council member Hanford pointed out, he's excited, and so am I with all the events that we have lined up and and kinda noted the music in the park series that our Monroe Chamber of Commerce leads, a lot of that, and also movies under the moon. And I just circling your calendar for July twenty ninth, because I think you'll see me definitely probably rocking out at the base of the stage there, the Hair Nation, I mean, best of eighties arena rock, come on. And then, lastly, is the report, the monthly report on the unmarked trails inspection. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Remind, is there any questions for Mr. Farrell? All right, thank you, Mr. Farrell. We're gonna move on to the city administrator, to the public works department report with with Kim Clinkers, Ms. Clinkers. Good evening, Ms. Clinkers, and you are now with him.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Jody, do you mind clicking the slide, please? Thank you very much. So, good evening, Council and Mayor. I would just like to start off by introducing myself. My name is Kim Clinkers, and I'm a senior engineer in the Design and Construction Division of Public Works. I'm here to briefly overview the Public Works Department report for March. So here on this slide, we have highlighted an upcoming capital improvement project. I will be constructing a shared use path along Highway Two between one hundred and seventy ninth Avenue and Cascade View Drive as highlighted in red on the map. For some quick project background, this project is adjacent to the Snohomish County Fairgrounds, but it will be constructed within Wash Dot Right Of Way that is managed by the city. The intent of this project is to provide a separated path for pedestrians and bicyclists and power wheelchairs that currently travel along the shoulder of Highway Two that travel up one hundred and seventy ninth Avenue and head east towards the North Kelsey Shopping Centers. So as seen in this concept image, the project elements include a twelve foot wide asphalt path, new fencing, pass lighting, street trees and landscaping. And then there will also be a pedestrian bridge and a marked crosswalk at Cascade View Drive. The city received federal grant funds for this project, and Snohomish County is also willing to be a funding partner as well. So the design fees occurred last year. The city is currently working with Wash Dot to approve the final project documents. Construction is expected to begin by June, and we are hopeful to be open to the public prior to the Evergreen State Fair, which begins in late August. So, moving on through the Public Works Report, we also highlighted employees who performed fire flow tests on thirty two fire hydrants located throughout the water system and described the benefits of this work, and we also wanted to do a special shout out to water quality lead Scott Barr, who led this effort. Lastly, there is an updated project map for our current design and construction capital improvement projects that's included. And that wraps up the brief summary of the Public Works Department report, and I'm happy to take any questions on that.
It's great. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, council member Hanford.
Thank you. Kim, it's nice to meet you. Welcome aboard. Just wanted to clarify, so when you talked about the that walkway that's along the fairgrounds there. I'm, my understanding is that when it ends at Cascade View Drive, there is no sidewalk that continues to North Kelsey and underneath five twenty two and all that on that side of the street. Is that correct, or?
Nope. No, there, it's not correct, and I can show some additional photos or share with you at a later time, but there is existing sidewalk east of Cascade View Drive. It's just a a concrete five foot width sidewalk that Wash Dot constructed. And so, once this project's constructed between one hundred and seventy ninth and Cascade View Drive, it'll connect to the existing sidewalk. And there is continuous sidewalk that continues further east under five twenty two, and then, you know, along the Starbucks and the Big Five Shopping Center and the signal at Kelsey Street.
Great. And then I guess the other, that's wonderful news. The only follow up question I have is where will there be a crosswalk be across Cascade View Drive?
Yeah, so the marked crosswalk is planned, so there'll be the shared use path will run parallel to Highway Two. At the east limit at Cascade View Drive, there'll be a pedestrian bridge that that crosses over that the ditch or the stream that's right there. And then there'll be a new small section of sidewalk with a curb ramp built right at that corner of Cascade View Drive, and so the marked crosswalk will go right there to connect the new curb ramp with the existing curb ramp on the east side of Cascade View Drive that connects to the existing sidewalk.
Great, and those are all ADA compliant, right? Because they have to be now.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Hey, do you have any questions for Ms. Clinkers on this report? I I will say that this is one of the things that I have very much wanted to see completed, and I am grateful for the work done by our engineers, our planners on this, also for anybody else involved in helping to get grants for it. I'm also really thankful for the work done by the county to help make this happen. I know that we've had people come in and speak to us, and spend a couple of years about this connection. I drive this way frequently, and just in the last week that I've been out there, I've seen people walking and also a motorized wheelchair out there on the, you know, on the wide sort of bike lane there. And to have this separation, it'll, I think it'll make the fairgrounds look better, more inviting, more part of our community, while at the same time providing for access for people going from one seventy ninth where the hospital is to the over to the Fred Meyer area. So, thank you, everybody, for working on this, and thank you, council members, for your support on it. Ms. Clinkers, I understand that you now have a report for emergency management, so please continue.
Okay, thank you, and please click the slide, Jody.
It's not the question.
Alrighty. Yep, so this will be really brief. We just wanted to present an updated case graph here, so as you can see, for COVID nineteen, the two week case count continues on a steep decline, which is good news for everyone. So that concludes the emergency management report.
Any questions on the line going currently down for Ms. Clinkers? Thank you very much, Ms. Clinkers. I really appreciate the work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to municipal committees twenty twenty two, work plans with Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not gonna go into the work plans in depth, but just wanted to point out to council that all of the council committees have adopted their work plans for twenty twenty two. We appreciate the effort that both staff and committee members have put into having very robust plans this year. So we have a lot of work to cover and really appreciate council's commitment to council committees. I think it makes a big difference in how much work we're able to accomplish together as a team. So happy to answer any specific questions that council members might have about committee work plans.
Any questions, council member, about committee work plans? All right. Council member Fisher, do you have any questions about the committee work plans?
I do not.
Let the record show that council member Fisher is in three dimensions. Everybody's jealous. Okay, looks like we don't have any questions. Thank you. Because I have my phone's active. All right, and we're gonna go into mayor and administrative reports now. Assistant Administrator Report Extended Agenda, Ms. Knight, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for the next meeting on March fifteenth, we do have, as the mayor had previously mentioned, a Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting, and that will include, at council members' request, a tour of City Hall, some reviews of employee handbook updates by Mr. Worthing, and then the finance plan for capital facilities projects. Ms. Hassard is taking the lead on that with support from Mr. Roberts. We will not have a regular study session at the meeting on the fifteenth. Those two items have been rescheduled for April. Looking forward then to March twenty second, the P three committee members will also be then touring City Hall. And then we are circling back around and having Republic Services come in and provide a presentation, and then a discussion of the garbage contract with Mr. Roberts. Tentatively, Mr. Palmer will be providing an update to the P three committee on an Amtrak stop in Monroe. That was a request from council last fall and was scheduled for the March P three committee meeting. And then an update again from Ms. Hassard and Mr. Roberts on the capital facilities plan. So any questions about the P three committee meeting?
Any questions about the P three committee meeting? Council member Falter, does your cat have any questions?
No, my cat is sufficiently informed, thank you.
Thank you. All right, good question. Please continue with that.
And then for the regular business meeting, we will have a state of the court address from Judge Ness. And then on final action, currently, we have scheduled the Conservation Futures Grant Award for the Ventures Property. And that's all for the extended agenda.
All right, thank you. Council members, any other questions on the extended agenda? All right, thank you. Assistant Administrator Report.
Thank you. I have a a number of items for the city administrators' report, and I just wanted to start off by thanking members of staff, Mr. Worthing and Ms. Hassard and others who covered for me. Well, Jim, my husband and I got to take a road trip to Arizona, so thank you to staff members who were able to kind of pick up and do the portions of my job, particularly those around the council meeting. So, we had a great time and got to enjoy some sunny weather. For the updates, just a reminder to council members, I know that our city clerk, Jody Wykoff, has reached out, and I think we have just about everybody scheduled for their city council official photos. So if you haven't had an opportunity to reach out and speak with Ms. Wykoff, we're planning those photos for Wednesday and Thursday of this week and Wednesday and Thursday of next week. So it'll be great to have everybody with consistent backgrounds and kind of consistent sizing. So looking forward to getting that project completed and updating the photos in the lobby then and and on the newsletter as well. The wastewater treatment plant, we have a tour for council. Again, this was at council's request. I know I always enjoy a tour of the city's wastewater treatment plant. We have that scheduled for March twenty ninth at five PM, and you can meet at the entrance to the wastewater treatment plant located at five twenty two Sam's Street. So again, if you have any questions about that, you could reach out to Ms. Wykoff. She's working with our Public Works Department to organize that tour along with Jacob Robertson, his team. We have received a request from Snohomish County Tomorrow to name an alternate to the Snohomish County Tomorrow Board. Council member Falter is currently our named delegate, and so we had let Snohomish County Tomorrow staff know that we would be talking with council this evening to see if we could get somebody who would be interested in volunteering to act as alternate if council member Falter can't attend those meetings. So just as a reminder to council, the Snohomish County Tomorrow Group is made up of elected officials representing each one of the cities in Snohomish County. They meet monthly on the fourth Wednesday from six to eight PM, and those meetings are currently remote. And I anticipate, based on conversations with county staff, that they will continue to be hybrid sometime in the future, and there will be a remote option that will be offered to elected officials who attend those meetings. So is there anybody on council who might be interested in acting as the alternate to that committee?
I'm a really important committee for us to have representation at. Go ahead, council member Hanford.
Yeah, I'm happy to be an alternate unless there's someone else that is looking.
Is there anybody else serving, other than council member Hanford? Is there any objection, council member Hanford, serving in that position? All right, saying no objection, council member Hanford, you are our alternate, and thank you for stepping forward. I appreciate it.
Thank you, council member Hanford, and I will pass along your information to Cynthia Pruitt, who is the staff support for Snohomish County Tomorrow, so I expect that you'll get an email from Ms. Pruitt sometime in the next couple of days. The, thank you. The second committee that the county has formed is the Affordable, the Housing Affordability Group, or otherwise known as HART. This group is again made up of elective officials representing cities in Snohomish County. The purpose of the group is to work together to come up with recommendations on how to distribute Snohomish County's housing and mental health sales tax. come up with recommendations on how to distribute Snohomish County's housing and mental health sales tax. Uh the county council recently adopted that tax, and it's going to go into effect. And they are gathering um input and recommendations from elected officials as to how that money um might be distributed equitably across the county. Their first meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April fifth, from four to six PM. That will be a remote meeting. And I haven't um received any indication as to kind of the frequency of future meetings. I anticipate that they'll be meeting one or two times per month um probably for four to six months, so it's not an ongoing commitment. Uh this is again a really important uh regional committee. Um simply because in order to ensure that we have equitable distribution of those funds that are um raised in wouldn't, uh excuse me, raised in Monroe um through our sales tax. Uh we need to make sure that we have representation. So if there's anybody that's interested in serving on this um limited-term group, uh we would appreciate both an uh an uh delegate and an alternate.
Who has been serving on this? We talk about housing affordability all the time. It's a a group that's gonna be for a few months, limited term. Is there anybody that's able to attend these remotely? Again, the first meeting is four to six on Tuesday, April fifth. I know it's the same night as of council meetings. I know there are sometimes committee meetings at that time, but it's important for us to have a voice at the table. So I would appreciate having somebody. Go ahead, Councilmember Kenny.
I was just going to let council know I would be happy to do this, but I start coaching track in April, and it's for about two months or so. So I would be unavailable at that time.
Okay. There any other council members who would be willing to serve uh four to six on April fifth and potentially that timeframe for a couple or a few months? All right. Um it's important we have somebody on this. The go ahead.
Sorry, I should have raised my hand. I apologize. Um I can do that.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Foulter. I appreciate you stepping forward again. Uh is there any objection to Councilmember Foulter serving in this position? Uh I'll let you know that the Community Human Services Advisory Board received a presentation from HART. Um uh about HART uh last week. The Community Human Services Advisory Board is very interested in this. One of their chief things that they wanted to make, one of their primary things that they were concerned about was ensuring that there's an equitable distribution of funding. Um that includes the Sky Valley, and it's also equitable in terms of uh helping out uh different people with different needs, different levels of crisis and uh different lived experiences. So uh this is something that one of our boards is very interested in, and I suspect the Planning Commission holds a similar interest in uh maybe EDAT as well. So uh Councilmember Foulter, thank you for stepping forward. Uh there being no objection to Councilmember Foulter, she will be our delegate. Is there anybody who's interested in serving as an alternate in the event that she's not available?
It it it's just hard to make a commitment without knowing what the dates are, but Mr. Mayor, I mean, that's.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Hanford.
Yeah, I I'm willing to be an alternate. I just, I can't. I can't guarantee anything, but I'm willing to be the alternate.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we will send our delegate as Councilmember Foulter. Thank you, and Councilmember Hanford. Thank you. All right, please continue, Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last item I have is an uh update on the city's website. So as part of the contract that we have with our web provider, they are providing a refresh uh to our look and feel of our website, and I have uh Mr. Heebner with us here this evening, and he's just gonna give council a quick tour. Uh I wanted to make sure that council members had an opportunity to see the website before it was launched. And uh you had an opportunity then uh potentially to share it with others. So, Mr. Heebner, you wanna go ahead with your presentation? Oh, you're on mute, Mr. Heebner.
I owe the buck this time.
You owe the buck.
Thank you very much, Ms. Knight. Uh good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. Uh thank you, Ms. Knight, for that introduction. As uh as she shared, the city's website is hosted by a company called Civic Plus. You can see their tagline at the bottom of our page. And as Ms. Knight mentioned, as part of our relationship with Civic Plus, um we are entitled every few years to a uh general refresh to the look and feel, as well as in other years, um a a full update to the template and and um operation of the website itself. This year is the general refresh to the look and feel. So what you see on your screen currently is uh the current city website. Um a couple of things, we we, the website is currently predominantly blue in color and uh simply states the city's name and Rowa at the top. Um we also have at the the, when you first visit the site, kind of a scrolling section of of news um here on the top section of the of the page. So last summer, uh the city hired two interns, Ally Edwards and Claire Sorgin. And we had the opportunity to assign to those individuals the opportunity to kind of come up with recommendations on a uh on a a look for this refresh. They took the time to really thoroughly review other Civic Plus pages of government agencies, cities, counties, other junior taxing districts throughout the Western United States. And really put together a really strong list of recommendations for how the new uh the new website should look. So I'm gonna jump over to uh what Civic Plus is calling an active template for the homepage. Couple of things that will jump out to you right away is uh the change in color scheme. We we asked for Civic Plus to really start to incorporate all three of the city's color brands. Um the purple, the gold, and the blue. Uh the gold being uh recommended that they use very prominent, or excuse me, as a uh a a an accent uh color with with purple and gold being the primary colors. So uh some comparison pieces. One of the first things you'll notice, we now have the city logo in the upper-left corner as opposed to uh just the name of text. In the upper-right, there is now uh right above our search function, there is very prominently an opportunity to translate the page into any number of many languages uh that is available through uh Google Translate. Uh so again, the look and feel is generally the same. Uh instead of having that scrolling feature that can sometimes be hard to keep up to date, uh we're replacing it with this one static box uh here on the right side of the homepage. Right now, this welcome to Monroe is kind of a placeholder. Uh it's the plan of uh the city staff that this will um that this will have the Imagine Monroe vision statement as you come to the homepage, but can then be updated if needed for um emergent situations that may arise. Uh the buttons below have got an update, a little bit more interactive look and feel. As you hover over them, they change color and a a accent line appears to help the uh visitor know exactly where they are uh where they're hovering. Uh the folks at Civic Plus included uh swifts in the in the design to kind of have a an element that stands out and and really demonstrates this as Monroe's website. So as you scroll down, one of the uh, one of the additional features that was incorporated here are news, uh our news flash section. I'm gonna jump back to the old page for a second, and you'll you'll notice there's a lot of empty unused space on the left and right side of the page. Our icon buttons are kind of jammed together. The city news, there's a lot of empty space to the sides. So as we as we roll out this update, Civic Plus has really taken the opportunity to make the page more adaptive to the more rectangular shape of uh computer screens in use today. Uh so some of that space is starting to get used up. The buttons are pushed out a little bit further. We've been able to add a description to those. And as we get to the latest news and trending topic section, we now see there the ability to have up to four uh four topics of of recent news and trending uh latest news and trending topics in the city. Scrolling down a little bit further, one of the other changes that we're excited about is to the calendar of events. Uh on the current page, we have a a static calendar here on the left and that puts a dot behind the number when there's something on that particular date, but doesn't really share a lot of information with the visitor. And then kind of a jammed uh together listing of events and and meetings that are taking place. So on the new page, we're gonna be moving to what Civic Plus calls a strip calendar. You can see the five dates here in a row, and there are items listed underneath each date. Uh so on a date such as next Tuesday, when there's two items, those will stack uh two or more items. Those will stack on top of each other on on the calendar. So uh as you currently see, there are up to five dates available, and those will will shift as one date drops off and new items come on. Uh the big thing to note here, there is now going to be a separation between public meetings and community events. So this kind of helps the the uh visitor have a better idea of what's going on in the community. We'll have our boards, commissions, and city council meetings under public events and uh, excuse me, under public meetings. And under community events, we will have uh that's where our um music in the park, our Easter egg hunts, the the events that are open to the community will be situated under that tab. Uh this is not active yet, so we don't have an example to show you, but uh just please know that when you do come to uh the webpage, you'll be able to click back and forth in that section. And then as we scroll down, the the image behind uh the page, it can, it scrolls with the viewer as uh as they scroll to the bottom of the page. And as they get down to the bottom, the gold starts to uh come to the front and becomes a sunset on top of a great mountainscape to really establish our location here in the Sky Comish Valley. Uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report on the website update. I'm happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you, Ms. Flinker. Any questions? Councilmember Server. Go ahead, Councilmember Carver.
No dollar. Just if here's an opportunity in whatever you have here to incorporate our new signs at the east entrance, south entrance, or the uh west entrance and the uh south entrance to the city, you might think about where they might fit in after they're up.
Thank you very much, councilmember. I will uh I'll make a note, and as you said, once the once the signs are are in place, we'll look for a great opportunity to incorporate those into the into the site for sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Carver. Councilmember Campbell, go ahead.
There, I wasn't gonna pay a buck. Um first of all, you're never gonna hear me complain about introducing purple and gold into a color scheme, so good choice. Um I'm sure Ms. Hassard was didn't didn't like that, but it's all good. Uh or no, she would like it, never mind. Uh the so I I can, I'm in the page right now, but the link you're saying is not live. It's just that the links aren't live. Is that what you're saying? Cause I'm
That's correct, councilmember. Yeah, this is a, this is an active template. Um you gave me an opportunity. I realized I forgot to mention that this uh this will be rolled out to the public on Wednesday, March thirtieth. So uh no, the link I'm on is not yet active, but will be in the next few weeks.
Well, the link is, but the the links that are within the page, because I'm on the page right now. I just went to the site. I just typed the URL in.
You're you're correct. Yes, the links within it are not active, correct.
Okay, looks great. No, I think this is, and I I love how we, the the integration of social. Uh because that's where a majority of people get their information anyway. Um and just having it linked right there, uh that's good.
Thank you very much, council, uh councilmember Campbell. And and your question uh gave me an opportunity to mention this uh this design will be throughout all pages of the uh of the of the page. The Civic uh plus team, when they roll out, they they anticipate it'll take approximately fifteen minutes to migrate the design throughout the site, and then they will be spending up to four hours going through every page to make sure that the template has carried over. So this will apply to all of those pages within the site.
All right, thank you. Go dogs.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember, Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Um just wanted to um congratulate staff that worked on this. Uh this really um has been needed for a while. Um at my workplace, we are also uh redoing our website after ten years, and so I know the hours and hours of hard work that go into this and choosing photographs and just everything. It it's a huge undertaking, and it is just looks fantastic. Uh it's also making it easier to serve um and inform Monroe residents, which is is always great. Uh just had a couple of questions for you. Uh number one, how is this being shared with Monroe residents that we redesigned this?
That's a a great ca- a great boy, am I struggling over my tongue this evening. I apologize. That's a great question, councilmember. Thank you. Uh we will be uh, there will be a message in uh the Monroe This Week newsletter. Uh we will also be sharing throughout our social media um platforms. And uh the website, I I mentioned a moment ago, the uh the latest news and trending topic section. Uh that is an area where Monroe residents are able to sign up for notifications when we put out an an updated news announcement. So we'll be doing a an announcement there in advance, announcing that the the website update i- is coming. And anyone who is registered for a notification through that system will receive that. Uh so those are the, those are the primary outlets. I'm anticipating also doing a uh press release and and uh hoping that that gets picked up by uh some of our local media as well.
Absolutely. Uh maybe uh notifying the Herald and the Snohomish Tribune for sure. Um are you planning to announce this on Facebook and the city website as well?
Yes, both uh both of those platforms. So uh Facebook, uh city, city website, uh press release, Monroe This Week are our primary outlets, and if councilmembers have any other suggestions on uh ways that we can uh announce not only the website, but any other announcements, I am more than happy to accept those. As as you've mentioned, councilmember, our our goal is definitely to get information out to our residences as 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 far and wide as we can.
Fantastic. Uh one last question. Um I think it was about two years ago. Uh Ms. Knight reached out to me and the Historical Society and said, we really need to put some history on our website, which we did do. I'm wondering if there is an opportunity to maybe fine-tune that um and add even more information and possibly photographs uh sort of delving into Monroe history on this new website.
I I would not not assume to speak for Ms. Knight, but for uh for me and the team that did the website uh the design, I would say absolutely. Feel free to to send any updates uh and information that you would like um for that section, councilmember, to me, and and we will be happy to get that um get that section updated.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And I also wanted to just acknowledge Ms. Knight for reaching out to us a few years ago and including the history on the websites. Very important. And no one had ever done that before, so we were delighted that she thought that that was important. And I hope people have enjoyed reading about the early beginnings of our city. Thanks so much.
Thank you, councilmember. And I know I mentioned in my introduction uh Ms. Edwards and Ms. Sorgin from uh for doing this work last year. To councilmember Kenny's point, they they really did dedicate a a significant number of hours to this project that um those of us in the in the full-time staff would have been very difficult to be able to do. So uh councilmember, I appreciate you recognizing the number of hours that go into a project like this, and I want to take this opportunity to thank council for their support of the internship program last year. Uh without Ms. uh Edwards and Ms. Sorgin, this project would probably not have uh been completed uh nearly as timely as it was. So thank you all.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Heebner? All right, Ms. Knight.
Uh that's it for the city administrators' report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor's Report, we can see Monroe This Week, Eric Aketz. Um I did have a meeting with uh just happened, I attended last week. I also attended the Wannas Club last week. Talked to them about Imagine Monroe. I'll be meeting with the Rotary Club tomorrow uh and talking about Imagine Monroe, so um we continue having conversations with different folks about uh our new aspirational vision, Imagine Monroe, and uh I do see that Michael Whitney is in the attendees list. I'd encourage him to reach out to follow up on that if he's interested. Um we also talked a little bit uh last week um about some of the other sort of priorities that council's established for for us to be implementing throughout the years. So about some of the other sort of priorities that council's established for, for us to be implementing throughout the years. So that's all that I have to report for this evening. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, in the event that I forgot, does anybody have additional questions for Ms. Knight? Go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Just to clarify, thank you. Is, did we decide, are we meeting next Tuesday, or was that canceled?
You have a committee meeting. Somebody has a committee meeting next week. There is no council meeting next week.
Okay, so the first in person will be the following week.
For a hybrid meeting, for the full council, be the following week, yes. The committee meeting next week will be a hybrid meeting here in chambers is what I currently understand they're doing. So as we're, with the new, the new equipment here actively tonight, so I'm getting a yes right now.
And so there'll be champagne to celebrate the...
Not on the premises unless you want to change a code or two. We can set up an emergency ordinance, a special meeting for Thursday with 24 hours' notice and have that discussion then.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything further? All right, we do have a need for an executive session. As before, we may have a little, a little transition while we're moving devices. The executive session is for potential litigation persons to RCW 42.30, 110 subsection 1, subsection 11. Just like before, we will maintain a regular meeting, like you see right here, where everything is muted. We will then reconvene with the council and an executive session when that is over. We will then come back into this meeting that everybody else is in right now. There will be potential action to take, if nothing else, to adjourn for the evening. We are going to go into executive session again for potential litigation, as discussed earlier, for an initial seven minutes. Thank you. We are now in executive session beginning at 8:37, yeah, 8:38, yeah. Okay, we are now out of executive session. Thank you, everybody, for your patience as we're working through some new technology here for hybrid meeting. We have no further business this evening, so without objection, we are adjourned. Is there any objection to that? Councilmember Hanford?
Wanted to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day.
Happy to you.
Actually, Irish-American Heritage Month, so.
Nice.
Hon lives Scotland.
All right, if there's no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night.